Okay, good evening, everybody. At 6 o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll begin with an invocation led by Councilmember Fugit, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Parker. Please rise as you're able.
Oh holy one, we thank you for this opportunity to gather today to work for our city. We are grateful for our blessings and for the opportunity to serve. We ask your guidance as we discuss the important matters before us. Bless our efforts to make a positive impact in Knoxville. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson, would you please call roll?
Councilwoman Fugis.
Here.
Councilwoman Helsley.
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Councilwoman Parker.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Here.
Councilwoman Roberto.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Vice Mayor Smith.
And Councilman Thomas.
Seven members present, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on the minutes of the July 17th workshop?
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Roberto?
Sorry. I was just reading my laptop.
That's okay. Any other questions about this minutes of the workshop? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion on the minutes of the regular meeting?
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? For tonight's agenda, are there any items to be withdrawn? Are there any? Oh, Councilmember Thomas, withdrawn?
No, I was anticipating.
Postponed. Okay. Are there some items to be postponed?
Yes, in two areas. Mayor, 12-Q by mutual agreement would be postponed until September the 2nd.
Okay, why don't we separate them out?
Yeah, that is just one.
Okay, so there's a motion.
That one's by itself.
Okay.
That one's complete.
You're making a motion to postpone item 12-Q till September 9th?
Right, September 2nd.
September 2nd?
Right.
Okay, the day after Labor Day. Okay, is there a second?
Second, second.
Okay, motion made to postpone item 12-Q to September 2nd. It's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, in District 1, 12-AF, 12-AG, and 12-AH, that's all on the same parcel of land. And that's in Vice Mayor Smith's district. He's not here today, and so I would move that that be postponed for two weeks. And I understand that the parties have been notified and that there's no objection.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to postpone items 12-AF, AG, AH, AI, and that, that's it, right? Those four?
No, not I, FG and H.
Okay, FG and H, sorry. Thank you for clarifying. For two weeks, so that would be till August 19th. It's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to postpone carries. Okay, are there any other items to be postponed? Are there any items to be added by motion? Are there any consent items? Okay, there's nothing on the consent agenda, so we'll move right on to my mayor's report. First, I want to thank everyone who came out to or were there in spirit to celebrate our $13.7 million investment in the Burlington community. The groundbreaking last week was very celebratory. We broke ground for the new fire station and streetscapes last Thursday. It was such a great morning. A lot of community leaders, elected officials, a lot of firefighters, and a lot of the business owners who've been there through thick and thin are excited to see these investments. So, council, thank you for your support for all these projects. It was great to see this work underway. Tomorrow is a special event and a special portrait unveiling ceremony for longstanding City of Knoxville Municipal Judge John Rossin. Judge Rossin served the people of Knoxville for almost 40 years, and we're going to celebrate with an unveiling of a portrait in his honor. The ceremony will be at 5 o'clock at the Public Safety Complex. Everyone's invited. Thursday, for those of you who have school-aged kids, you might know it's back-to-school time. And even if you don't have school-aged kids, you'll know because there'll be more people moving around and using our city streets, so please remember to slow down in school zones and be extra careful, as students all across the area will be walking, biking, and getting to and from school. Many warm wishes to all the families who have kids in schools, and also all the teachers and staff who make sure our schools are safe and run so well. We really care so much that they have a good school year. And I had an opportunity to talk to some students last week in my new podcast called "Kicking It With Concannon." It's going to be broadcast, I guess, or dropped. It'll be out next, tomorrow. And we talked a little bit about the new school year, so if you're interested in enjoy podcasts, come listen to "Kicking It With Concannon." We've got some students there from Dogwood Elementary, West High School, and Fulton High School. Another really exciting event this week, we always celebrate East Tennessee's Emancipation Day on August 8th. So this August 8th is no different, but the celebration this year is a little different. The Beck Cultural Exchange Center will be hosting a special 8th of August Jubilee tribute at Covenant Health Park. This community-wide event will honor the history of the Negro League in Knoxville and celebrate the legacy of emancipation in Tennessee. I want to publicly thank Renee Kessler and the Beck Center for all they do to help educate and preserve African-American history in our city. And finally, our rules of decorum. A quick reminder, we are here to do the city's official business. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum need to sign up with the city recorder before 4:00 p.m. Do not use profanity. And when speaking to specific agenda items, you must stay on topic. Remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly, that is, statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules will be ruled out of order. For those who are listening, please note if you disrupt a public meeting, you'll be asked to leave or escorted out. Thank you in advance for everyone's respect for these rules. And that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any reports from council members? Councilmember Helsley?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. As KTA Board Chair, I want to congratulate Cat on, they have a contract ratified, they're good to go, and congrats to all. And also, on 8/25, August 25th, the Downtown Connector will now finally go by the stadium, which it was supposed to do with Cat Reimagined a year ago. But the roads are finished, and so on 8/25 now, you can take the Downtown Connector to watch a ballgame, or a soccer game, or whatever.
Thank you. Councilmember Helsley? Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind everybody that early voting in the primary for the city elections starts tomorrow, and it's going to end August the 21st. So just wanted to encourage everyone to take advantage of the early voting times and locations. The primary election day will be on August the 26th. And just as a reminder, the sales tax will not be on the primary, it will be on the November general election. So if you go down there and you don't see that question, nothing was wrong, it's not going to be there until November. So just a reminder to get out and vote and take advantage of those early voting times and locations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other reports from council members? Seeing none, we'll move on with the agenda.
8C is a resolution confirming the mayor's reappointments of Craig Cobb and Jeanette Kelleher to the Knoxville Affordable Housing Fund Advisory Committee.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Thomas?
I just think those are good appointments, and I've worked with Mr. Cobb on some projects, and I think he would really be a great resource.
Great, I agree. Thank you. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11D is a resolution to affirm council's legislative authority to amend the city budget, including line item amendment authority, as well as the authority to adopt an alternative budget for the City of Knoxville when a majority of council members reject the budget introduced by the mayor and adopt a budget ordinance introduced by a member of council.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, we have two people signed up to speak in favor of this item. First is Jeff Tolman. Mr. Tolman, please come to the podium, turn on the mic, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council. I've paid attention to civics, politics in Knoxville for 40 years, and I've always been fascinated by the relative institutional weakness of city council. And I've heard various arguments why that's a good thing, and I've heard various arguments why that's a bad thing. And in my view, I think it's an opportunity for us to re-establish our trust and faith in the citizens of the community, in each other as council members, and have some additional confidence about this body. It's interesting, with the tensions within the federal government, legislative, executive, judiciary, the Article 1 body is the legislative, so that's where the power comes from. And I support this because I think it's a healthy thing to have an enthusiastic, robust discussion about budget priorities. At the end of the day, money is where the action is, in terms of how people earn it, how it's spent, how it's prioritized, et cetera, et cetera. And I think it's interesting, I had the chance to go to the State of the City address, which was fabulous, Mayor, and there was a celestial alignment of good feelings in Knoxville. There were angels in the outfield, and everything was great. And we had a first reading of the budget, and the good folks at this council signed on to the first reading, and then with a hastily-called press conference on the eve of the second reading, we were, as a citizenry, as a community, alerted that we needed additional revenue. So, and that's an intellectually honest position to have. I get it. I think what it did, though, is it hung you guys out to dry. You sat through the first reading, you sat through the State of the City address, and everything was great, and effectively, you were, I'm trying to find a polite anatomical term for what happened, but I think in some ways, your strength as a body was not respected. And my view is that it's a healthy thing for council to have these discussions. Now, I've had no discussion with Councilwoman Parker about this, and in the past, I would bet, if you know my views and her views, that we would have probably some lively discussion about various budgetary priorities. But that's the point. This is a healthy thing, and I think on some level, this is an opportunity to, whatever the legal procedures are, charter, amending, reinterpreting, looking at national precedent, I don't know, that's in the weeds. My view is the important thing is to end up at a place where our legislative body in Knoxville has confidence in itself, has confidence in its citizenry, and unleashes a new era of civic engagement in Knoxville that frankly, I predict will be very, very healthy. So I'm in favor of it, and I appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak in favor of item 11D is Rick Roach. Mr. Roach? Is Mr. Roach present? I think he's not here, so we'll move to council members. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I introduced this resolution in hopes that it would allow us an opportunity to have a discussion about our budgeting process. When I introduced an amended budget ordinance in May, I initially thought it was in the correct form to present to city council, but learned from the law department that it was the law department's opinion that it conflicted with the charter. And so I began a multi-week process of trying to better understand how that ordinance conflicted with the charter. And just recently, on July 30th, I got a response, a more thorough response, to my questions, and it appears that the interpretation of the charter not allowing line item amendments in the budget by council is largely coming from an opinion from a former law director who feels that because the charter allows for the mayor to move money within a department without council action after a budget is adopted, then that would negate any line item amendment that council would attempt to make. My argument is that, first of all, there are scenarios that one can imagine where council could make a line item amendment to change a department's budget, and that would impact the overall total of that budget. And although the mayor could move money within the budget, they're now working with a smaller budget within that department. So to say that that ability within the charter negates all impact that city council can make, I don't agree with. And I laid that out in a letter that I shared with you all. Also, the issue in front of us is my amended ordinance, which simply amends community agency grants. And I feel that that's another example of how city council can amend the budget and make a line item amendment that not only is in line with the charter, but required by ordinance. For community agency grants, we not only have to follow what is laid out in the charter, largely Section 901 of the charter, which explains how the budget ordinance should be organized, but we also have an appropriations ordinance that states that when we make appropriations, when council makes appropriations to community agencies, those appropriations must include the name of the nonprofit and the exact amount granted to the nonprofit. And so for me to present an amended budget ordinance that's in line with the charter and in line with our appropriations ordinance, I had to amend the appendix to the budget ordinance that contains all of the nonprofits to receive a grant. The advice that I got from the law director was that I, council only has the authority to amend the overall general fund, and not anything within the general fund necessarily. But if you look at the budget ordinance, which is attached to the resolution in the agenda, there is no line item for Fund 100 in the budget ordinance. So there's no way to amend Fund 100 because it's organized in departments in the ordinance. And if I am to amend the departments within that budget ordinance, including the community agency grants, the amendment that I make has to match the total for community agency grants that's included in the appendix. And so that's why I made the amendment in the way that I did. And I wanted to continue this conversation because, you know, for the last six years, I've worked to have a good understanding of our budgeting process and what authority council has within that process. And I've heard over and over, you know, how limited our authority is, but when you read the charter, it does not read as if our authority is limited. There are several sections of the charter that are important. One in particular is Section 401, which grants city council our broad plenary powers, which means the charter does not have to enumerate all of council's powers. Any powers that the charter has not essentially assigned remain with city council. And some of the arguments that were being lifted up from the city council attorney, and I believe law director, but I can't remember if law director made this argument, but was that there was no specific section of the charter that granted us line item amendment authority, there was no court ruling, there was no law that's been passed that granted us that authority. However, under Section 401, we already have that broad authority within our legislative powers, because there's nothing in the charter that prohibits it. So I think the Section 401 is really important to remember. Multiple sections within, or multiple parts within Section 901 that define council's role in making appropriations, that no appropriations shall be authorized, that are not authorized by council. These are pretty absolute powers that the charter has given us, and so I have not been presented with anything that proves to me that we do not have the ability to, at least as I've stated in the resolution, make line item amendments to community agency grants.
Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Parker, I have a few questions. So our vote, two different sections, our vote today is how we interpret the charter as far as line item.
Yes, our vote today expresses council's understanding of our authority under the charter.
Second is, what would that hypothetically look like at the first reading if a council member wanted to make an amendment? Yeah, how do you imagine that going?
At the first reading of the mayor's proposed budget?
Yeah, just the whole process.
So the, under the charter, the mayor must present, propose a budget to council, and it is not until after the legislative budget hearings that council can entertain amendments. So in the past, conversations have taken place at legislative budget hearings. It's my understanding that no one has attempted to submit an amended budget ordinance to the agenda, but there's nothing that, in our charter, that would preclude us or prevent us from submitting an amended budget ordinance. It just must meet certain requirements that are laid out in the charter. It has to present a balanced budget. It cannot change the budget estimates as presented by the administration in the budget You know, all expenses have to be provided for by a fund, back to being a balanced budget. And I've met all of those requirements in my amended budget ordinance. But the question is, since this has not perhaps happened before, is there anything about submitting that amended budget ordinance on the second reading that's in conflict with the charter? And I do not see anything that's in conflict with the charter.
Okay, Councilwoman Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. I've, like several of you, have been up here for almost eight years now, and I don't feel like I've had limited authority or limited ability to voice my opinion about the budget. I don't know if you all have the same feelings or not, but, you know, certainly what I know I've done, and I'm pretty sure the rest of you have done, is meet with the mayor pretty regularly as you're getting closer to the end of the fiscal year, having discussions about, or as you're approaching budget season, actually, so the end of the year, having discussions about your priorities, kind of things that you want to see happen. And I've certainly seen that the conversations that I've had, you know, now with two mayors, I've seen those things show up in budgets, you know? Council has an entire year of time to discuss and debate in these meetings about what their priorities are, and we've done that and expressed those things. Certainly, we've seen, I think, influence from council in what we see for city employee pay. Certainly, we've seen that in sidewalk funding, in funding for traffic calming and other projects. We've seen that in workforce housing. And we've seen times when council and the administration have had differences of opinions about different things, and council has moved us in a direction that may have been different than where the administration wanted to go. A great example of that is institutional sign standards. There's a lot of resistance towards that, but we got that done, we worked it out. Design standards in other areas, so we've worked these things out. So I don't feel like I have had any reduced authority at all. I feel like I've been able to discuss the needs of the second district and the needs of the city with both mayors, with this council, and we don't always see eye to eye, we don't always agree on everything. And certainly, there are times when I might think funding might have been a little different with something else, but I don't subscribe to that. The other question I was going to ask was just about the specific legality of this. So I wanted to talk to council's attorney first. So, Mr. Frost, in your capacity as council's attorney, do you represent any one of us individually? Like, are you my attorney, or are you council's attorney?
No, Councilmember Roberto, I represent the body of city council and not an individual or two members of city council. I represent nine.
Okay. And in your review of what we're talking about today, which is basically amounts to a line item edit for council authority in the charter, I think we were talking about, what I heard from Councilmember Parker, was an appropriations ordinance versus the charter. Does one of those supersede the other?
Yes, Councilmember Roberto, the charter supersedes an ordinance, just like when the state law was changed regarding elections in the City of Knoxville. It's kind of the government hierarchy.
Okay. So in your review of this, does council possess this authority that is being discussed in item 11D?
No, sir. There, I know we have, there's been this discussion, and first, Councilmember Parker, I can obviously tell that she has put a great deal of thought into this. It's the, you know, the saying that all these words came from a great deal of effort and labor on her part. But the last whereas clause of her proposed resolution talks about, you know, what she's asking council to agree on is one of two things. The one I want to discuss is the ability, the authority for city council to adopt an alternative budget when a majority of the council members choose to adopt an amended budget ordinance introduced by a member of council rather than a budget ordinance introduced by the mayor. The plain reading of Section 901-F of the charter is, "If the council shall fail to adopt a budget prior to the 15th day preceding the commencement of any fiscal year, it shall be conclusively presumed to have adopted the budget as submitted by the mayor. Respectfully submit that no member of council has to vote in favor of the budget, but by operation of the charter, the budget that has been proposed by whoever is the mayor will become the budget for the City of Knoxville for the next fiscal year." Also, you know, I've looked a number of times. Also, you know, I've looked a number of times at the opinion of former Law Director John Roach. You know, the budget number, excuse me, the charter sections have changed, how it's numbered or lettered over the years. But once you locate where what he refers to in the newly organized charter, I maintain that that still is sound reasoning. Of course, anyone is welcome to disagree with it. As Mr. Swanson has said before on a few occasions, every lawsuit that's ever been won by somebody at the Supreme Court has also been lost by somebody at the Supreme Court. In attempting to try to bring a fresh set of eyes to the situation as a courtesy to Councilmember Parker, I asked a law clerk in my firm, who just finished his second year of law school, I presented him with the question that she asked. I did not ask for any result or anything. I just said, "What's your opinion on this?" And he produced a memorandum that I gave to Councilmember Parker. Then it's my understanding she has since distributed, which is fine. I was just trying to provide a fresh set of eyes on the situation because sometimes a fresh set of eyes is beneficial to the situation. But I still, respectfully, I don't waver from what Mr. Roach said many years ago because there hasn't been substantial changes in the city charter since that time that I would, that would cause me to disagree with that opinion. I do disagree that City Council can present a totally separate budget from that of the mayor. In my personal experience from many moons ago when I served on City Council, there was a, what I called, an informal budget amendment. And let me provide a little background. When Mayor Haslam came to City Council, or excuse me, came to become the mayor, the city didn't have the best finances going on. It wasn't insolvent or anything like that. And it was pretty obvious that a property tax increase was going to be necessary to maintain the level of services that city residents had grown accustomed to and deserved. So in Mayor Haslam's first budget, he eliminated, eliminated all 202 funds. But it soon came to be seen that 202 funds were very beneficial to organizations throughout the city. And at our City Council legislative hearings, there was a discussion and there was a straw vote. Informal, because it was only a workshop. Nothing could be binding. And I believe if it wasn't a unanimous decision of City Council, it was probably eight out of nine people supported it, bringing back a small portion of the 202 funds that had been eliminated. Well, Mayor Haslam realized that that was very important. It, you know, clearly, the vast majority of City Council supported that. And between first and second reading, that became part of the budget. And because it was such a small amount, it did not send the budget back to first reading. There was nothing ever placed on an agenda to do it. It was just done by a, you know, basically the sentiment of City Council that was well received by the mayor at the time. I am unaware of other budget issues that were solved similarly. Again, speaking from experience, a couple of times, I tried to get my colleagues to agree to add a position for codes and zoning. I think the best I ever did, I had four colleagues that agreed with me. And we couldn't even get to the point of where that money to fund that new position was going to come from. So that was a nonstarter. Nothing ever happened with that with, I can't remember if it was Mayor Ash or Mayor Haslam at the time. So it ended. But respectfully, I disagree with Councilmember Parker. I believe that the City Council does not have the capacity to submit its own version of the budget. And I think that's clearly laid out in the charter. I maintain that Mr. Roach's opinion is valid to this day.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
And this is where we've had our disagreement, is the statement that it's, council's limited authority is clearly laid out in the charter. I do not see that. The section that was read of 901 from the charter simply states that if we don't essentially come up with our own budget, the mayor's budget is adopted automatically. But if you back up a few sections within that same area in the charter, you know, it states that following the legislative budget hearings, the City Council may amend the budget proposed by the mayor. There's nothing in here that says council can only make verbal amendments to the mayor's proposed budget. So if we amend the budget and present it before council for consideration, that is submitting essentially an alternative budget that's still in line with what is required in the charter, that's still building off of the budget that the mayor proposed, staying within the budget estimates that the, that the administration has set. So there are certainly certain, some constraints for City Council there. But that passage that the mayor's budget is adopted automatically if council takes no action in no way means that we have to adopt the mayor's budget. All we can do is present our arguments at this point. It's in, it's in the hands of council.
Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you, Mayor. I just think it goes without saying, everybody knows this. Our charter has created an extremely powerful executive branch of government. That's a given. That was by design. And until there is a charter amendment that changes that, that is our form of government. And I appreciate Councilwoman Parker's viewpoint about our legislative authority. I think we all understand that our legislative authority is not as great as other city councils or as county commission or anybody else. But the charter is what governs us. So unless and until this body is willing to enter into a lawsuit with the city, which sounds to me like we would probably, that's a possibility. If City Council wants to do something that the city's attorney does not believe is in keeping with the charter, and when, on advice of our own council, it is not in keeping with the charter, I think that would be an interesting position to put us in. Which is why this council has said it would like to create a charter review committee that can look at these kinds of questions in more depth over a greater period of time and bring back recommendations to this body to put on a charter at a later date. So I do not dismiss Councilwoman Parker's frustration with our form of government being exceedingly strong executive branch, the strongest executive branch I know of in municipal government, governments, governments around here. But that is where we are. And if we, as a council, feel like that should change so that the legislative branch has more authority, I think we're going to have to do it through a charter amendment process. So I agree with the sentiment, but I'm not prepared to legislatively start trying to change the budget when our, when our City Council Attorney thinks that we don't have the authority to do that.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, very well said, Councilperson Fugit. And if you please would update me, I know there's a process going on, you're the chairperson, about possibly regular intervals. We will review the charter and make suggestions. Could you update me on that?
Why, thank you for asking. At our August meeting of the committee, we will begin the discussion of how to create a charter review committee, what, how many people need to be on it, how they will be selected, the frequency with which they meet. It is definitely needed. We have talked about it at City Council retreats for a long period of time, that as a body, the city needs to have a mechanism to, in regular order, review the charter and look for changes that might need to be made. So the hope is to bring back to this body the rules. The new rules was the first thing we were tasked with. We hope to bring that to you in September for first reading, some ordinance changes based to City Council rules. And then before the end of the year, while this body is still the legislative body intact as it is, a recommendation on the creation of a charter review committee, structure, and process. But we're not looking at the charter. If we create the process, then the process can be implemented and a committee could be named to begin that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, yes. And I agree a lot with Councilperson Parker's concerns. In fact, I sympathize quite heavily with a lot of them. I think we probably at some point do need to look at the balance of power between the executive and the legislative here. Not that I've had terrible experiences here, but I think it is time for a review of that. Appreciate the person who came to the podium earlier. I appreciate his comments as well. It's just that I don't think these possible ambiguities in what the charter is right now can be really resolved in a resolution. You know, we have people with legal training on both ends of it. And I think really, the only way to resolve it is to have a charter review and dig into it and remove ambiguities if they are, or make changes as they are. So although I really do appreciate this discussion and I appreciate Ms. Parker bringing this forward because I think that review is needed. I can't support the resolution, but I will support a robust discussion in a charter review environment.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, part of the reason I brought this forward was just simply to get it on the record. I have no expectations that this resolution will pass tonight. But I do find it unfortunate because I think, you know, initially, the goal is to bring it to council, for council to have a discussion about what the authority of council is. But ultimately, it's to make the public aware. Because when I read the charter, this council and this city government does not operate the way the voters have asked us to operate. The charter does not establish a strong mayor government. There are several sections that you can read through. 901R of the charter, "No money shall be drawn from the city treasury, nor shall any obligation for the expenditure of money be incurred except in pursuance of the appropriations made by council." "No money shall leave this city unless council approves it." That's some pretty absolute power right there. So there are other options. There are options for a future council who can take this issue up and take it on. And there are options for the public to bring their own referendum forward. But I don't believe there needs to be clarification within the charter. And I am a little bit worried about a charter review process that you, the public, do not pay close attention to. Because what we're seeing at all levels of government is that too often, it's easier to allow that power to be concentrated into the executive. And it takes more work on our behalf as citizens. It takes more work on our behalf as council members to not allow that power to get concentrated up into the executive. Even when our laws clearly state what the authority of council should be, we can have different interpretations. And before we know it, we've had a practice that's been in place for decades that goes against what the voters in this city have asked us to do. So I just put this on our agenda today. I want it to be in the record. I've done all the things that I need to do to have all of this in the record. So hopefully, there will be a future council that will, that will pick this up. Because I feel like governments are healthier when we have a healthy balance of powers. And right now, we don't. Right now, when we discuss budget amendments, they're, they're not allowed for council to make. The process that Councilmember Roberto just described to you is exactly what's expected, regardless of what's said in the charter about amending the budget. The practice has become have a meeting with the mayor and get what you want in a budget that way. Don't bring it to these public forums for discussion. Don't have these negotiations happen during the legislative budget hearings. That's not how things operate in this city. Not above board, not transparent. If we were being transparent, you would have an idea of what every request was from every council member of the mayor in the budget. We don't have that level of transparency. But if we had these opportunities to have more robust discussions and we had a council who was willing to use their authority to amend the budget, I believe we would have much more engaged citizenry. I believe we'd have folks who are much more hopeful about what is possible rather than having everything concentrated into one office. And if you have a relationship with that person, you're great. But if you don't, it doesn't necessarily help to have that connection through your representative because we all have an open process. So I think how it's laid out in the charter is much more healthy. And I encourage the residents of our city to fight for it because your representatives are not upholding it at the moment.
Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you. I just want, for the record, because I think that implied that we're violating our rules, like not approving expenditures, everything on this budget that says authorize and, you know, approve the request and authorize the mayor to spend the money, is our authorization for all dollars that are spent from the city come to City Council through the, either through the budget or these contracts that we authorize the mayor to sign. So I don't want to debate anything else. I just do not want the, the message to be out there with people thinking that we, that the City Council is not doing its job as set out in the charter because money is not spent unless it is either approved in the budget by us or through these actions on our council agendas. Thank you.
Thank you. Singh, no further. Oh, Councilmember Singh?
Yeah. Go ahead. Thank you. I really respect you bringing this forward and putting it on the record. I have trouble looking at the interpretation and deciding that we do have line item veto powers in the charter. I think a charter review board is very important. It needs to be transparent. Where I get hung up on is we, because of sunshine laws.
Yes.
That's the word. Mr. Frost, could you say how a straw poll is? Seems to be a way that we have discussion and still have a vague vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Singh. If you all have a workshop, the City Council legislative hearings are a workshop. There's nothing binding that occurs on that. There's the presentation by the different department. There's the presentation by the different department heads, there's the question and answer session that occurs, there's the time for citizen input. So, if, for sake of argument, Councilmember Singh, if you wanted to have more money for bike lanes, you could have a discussion then and see if there was enough support from your colleagues, and you would have a non-binding straw poll. And if it was something that was doable or workable within the proposed city budget, then the mayor could do so. The mayor is under no legal compulsion to do so, but generally speaking, mayors are observant of what the majority of council would like to see happen. And like I said, there's no legal compulsion, but there's a chance.
I guess what I'm searching for is a place to insert a conversation where council can discuss, like I have certain priorities, I want to present it to other council members to see if there's support. So, I don't know if that's, I know the budget process is really intense and it takes, you know, it's very intense, and I don't want to add more to it, but it seems like maybe it's the, our forum, place like that, where we can put out what our requests are, so, I mean, I have the discussions with you, and that always goes well, but no, Ms. Parker's correct, no one else hears about those. What were the requests, what was acknowledged, what's kind of been pushed to the side, and there are times, we're people, we're professional, but there are times when our relationships do get strained, and then it does make an effect on those decisions. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah. Mr. Frost, council controls the agenda for the budget hearings, correct? Those are our hearings. So, building upon what Councilwoman Singh just said, we have the ability to have those discussions at the budget hearings if we choose, correct? Mr. Johnson, typically, the budget agenda, you, I'm sorry, the agenda for the budget hearings, you set those with the vice mayor?
Correct, and with consultation with the finance department.
Okay. But the other council members have the ability to make a request to you to put something on the agenda?
Of course.
Thank you.
Councilmember Parker?
I'm just a little confused by this lineup question, because the question before us is, can we amend the budget? But what is being discussed is, can we request of the mayor, that the mayor make a change to the budget? But that's not what's on the agenda. The question is, can we amend the budget? And the charter says, council can amend the budget. So, I'm very confused why we're not accepting that authority that we have.
Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah. So, two things. First off, Councilwoman Parker, I wasn't referring to the agenda item, I was just asking a question to clarify something Councilwoman Singh asked, so, not the same, but to clarify what you just brought up, what I think I heard here today is, they're saying that the charter says that we can't do that, and until the charter is changed and/or we sue them, that is what it is. That's what I heard. Mr. Frost, I mean, is that a good summary? I mean, I can sit here and revolt and say, I guess that's the question, do I say, I just don't agree with you, and I tell Mr. Evans over there how I'd like him to spend the money? And you guys are saying we can't do that, that we can either change the charter or sue, correct?
Off the top of my head, that would be what I think, Mr. Swanson's opinion on the matter.
Mr. Swanson, is that my understanding? I understand that correctly? If I vote on the resolution, I don't change the fact that you're telling me, and you're going to tell Mr. Evans, you don't listen to these folks, you listen to these folks.
Well, number one, you can't amend the budget. You can't amend the budget by department organization function, and the charter says that. What you may not do is amend the budget by line item. Now, your options at this point, which is what you were just now talking about, is the way our current charter is set up, you have to operate within what the charter permits. You have two lawyers at this table who help you decide what the charter says, and both of those charters, both of those lawyers have agreed that under the current situation, under the current charter, line item amendment is something that's not permitted by the council under the current charter. So, if council disagrees with those opinions, then I think your options are in fact limited to either going back to a charter committee and changing the charter. Certainly, that's something that's available to this council, provided for in the charter. Your other option would be to hire lawyer and sue.
Councilmember Singh?
Thank you. This is a resolution. Even if I agreed that, yes, the city charter is giving us, giving council members the authority to do line item vetoes, or change the budget, being a resolution, it doesn't really have to be honored. I mean, how would, there are a lot of resolutions that we've done that just haven't really gone anywhere. It's sort of symbolic, in a sense. So, I'm wondering if this is, this is actually a way that we can make a change that would, we would actualize and see occur, or not.
Well, there are a couple of things. There was a discussion about the appropriations ordinance and the charter, and that the charter trumps the appropriations ordinance. They have two different purposes. So, I don't even understand why that conversation was brought up. But the charter says that essentially, in multiple sections, whether we're talking about council action or action by the mayor, appropriations required by law have to be If we have, you know, an ordinance in place that says appropriations to nonprofits have to be done a certain way, that doesn't mean that because there's language in the charter allowing the mayor to move money within a department, that the mayor can then ignore an appropriation made by council to a nonprofit. That's the issue here, in my resolution. The conversation has grown bigger into any line item amendment, but that's not the argument that I've been making. I've been making an argument very much focused on community agency grants. And I, you know, the way the conversation has gone, it brings up those concerns where the communication becomes that we just can't even amend the budget, but we can, we can amend the budget, and when following what the budget requires of us to do, there are line item amendments that we can make. I mean, even within departments, we can make line item amendments, it's just that the mayor can move it back. But there's nothing in the charter that says we can't make that line item amendment. It's just simply that, you know, the mayor could move it back, except in certain situations, and community agency grants is one of them. So, for what it's worth, I just wanted to remind council that the resolution before you is simply about the amendment that I made and brought before council, which was to community agency grants. Oh, and the other thing that I wanted to state was, based on my research, we have other options. We could get an opinion from a court on an interpretation of our charter. We could get some sort of independent outside council to give an opinion. We have other options if we want to explore this further. But I've, there have been no arguments raised that would preclude my amended budget ordinance that I presented. There's nothing that would prevent us, in the charter, from following a legislative budget hearing, following the fabulous discussion that we have, deciding to present that in an amended budget ordinance, rather than verbally going through and amending the mayor's proposed ordinance in all the various ways that we might want to. And if your opinion is, that's just not a good way to, you know, work with the administration, that's an opinion that you absolutely can have. That is not the question before us. The question is simply, what does the charter allow us to do? You may never want to pursue an amendment to the budget, you may never support an amended budget ordinance, but that's not the question before you. The question is, does the charter prohibit us from doing it? And the only argument that has been lifted up is that we can't do it, because the mayor has the authority to move money within a department. And I just want to remind folks, there are other line item amendments that can be made. A mayor cannot move money from one department to another without council action. That's one amendment that we could, one line item amendment that we could make during that budgeting process before the budget is adopted. Once the budget's adopted, we are limited then on being able to make those, what then become transfers from one department to the next. But within the budgeting process-
Thank you. Councilmember?
We have the authority.
Seeing no further questions or comments, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion fails. Next item, please.
11E is a resolution to effect annexation of a parcel of land situated in the 6th Civil District of Knox County, Tennessee, to be added within Ward 46, City Block 46362 of the city of Knoxville, Tennessee, having an approximate calculated area of .54 acres, and being known this day as all of Tax Map 119, Insert L, Group A, Parcel 001.16, with an address of 0 North Gallagher View Road, and to approve a plan of service for said area.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve is made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Adams Contracting LLC for the North Cherry Street Drainage Improvements Project, in an amount not to exceed $2,43,211, funded with the American Rescue Plan Act grant.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 11I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the agreement with Petra Construction
Company LLC for the Cecil Webb Recreation Center renovation project, increasing the amount by $83,081.75 for a new total contract amount not to exceed $1,142,359.75.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, I just wanted to give some context, that this is to ease flash flooding, that often closes North Cherry Street, and I want to thank our team for identifying the problem and working to fix it. And we all know that some of our stormwater infrastructure is quite old and in need of repair, and this project is another step in the right direction, so appreciate your consideration and support. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated to provide additional design services for the Advanced Traffic Management System project, increasing the amount by $764,500 for a new total contract amount not to exceed $2,851,100.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the agreement with Petra Construction Company LLC for the Cecil Webb Recreation Center renovation project, increasing the amount by $83,081.75 for a new total contract amount not to exceed $1,142,359.75.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, just for the record, was going to ask, Mr. Claveau, what improvements are covered with this renovation project? There you go.
Sorry, but, so, the renovation of the rec center included an ADA access and a new landing, and then internal improvements to the rec center. This is just a final change order to kind of finalize quantities. There were some utilities that had to be reworked that we discovered during construction, and those type of things, but that's what this change order is for.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept emergency solutions grant funding from the Tennessee Housing Development Agency, in the amount of $134,375, to be used to provide homeless services.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Volunteer Ministry Center to provide an amount not to exceed $50,000 in homeless general funds for the provision of rapid rehousing services.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Ryder?
Um, yeah, I'm not sure which staff, Mr. DeBose maybe, is this continuation of existing services, like renewal, or is this something new?
Tracy Williams is here as well.
Sure, okay.
From VMC. It is a continuation, but if you want to come, Tracy-
Sure. Ms. Williams, would-
Yeah, come on.
Yeah.
Please, Ms. Williams, if you could come up to the podium, just turn the microphone on and state your name and address for the record. I know you're the executive director of VMC, but-
It's a little person.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, this is the first time you've got to come speak to us here, maybe?
Yes, and I did not dress appropriately, but-
You were dressed perfectly.
I was trying to hide. Tracy Williams, my address is 1316 Roosevelt Road, and with Volunteer Ministry Center.
Yeah, so, this is rapid rehousing. Just for the record, can you tell us what that covers and-
Yeah, rapid rehousing is a set of case management services designed for people who are not chronically homeless, or not, they're scored based on their level of ability to take care of themselves, whether it's a short-term condition, a long-term condition. And so, these folks have probably gone through a couple of major setbacks that just need some case management for a short amount of time, and a limited amount of assistance to get them housed, and then to help them stay housed.
Okay, and about how many people would be helped with the funding here?
Well, for this one, it's set up for, I think, 24, maybe 75. We easily surpass that usually annually. The only issue is, of course, the limited housing to put them in.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's a continuation from last year, so, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Volunteer Ministry Center Incorporated to provide an amount not to exceed $110,673 in community development block grant and homeless general funds for the provision of emergency shelter services to approximately 175 individuals- to approximately 175 individuals through its dental clinic and resources center.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, just a question for Mr. DeBose. Could you just give us a brief summary of kind of what's involved in this?
Yes, VMC, and this is a continuation of last year. We have come alongside VMC in supporting their dental clinic and as well as their center where they provide some intensive services, support services, and to homeless directly. This is something that has been very successful, in our opinion, and it's something we want to continue to fund.
Yes, and is there a particular location where the services are rendered, or is they spread out among different dentists or?
Yeah, there's one location for the dentist's center. I don't know the address.
Ms. Williams?
The street of-
Right there on Broadway, right.
Right there at the Bush Family Refuge. Ms. Williams?
Give my name again?
You're good.
No, just the 511 Broadway, corner of Broadway and 5th. We have a dental clinic upstairs and the day center is downstairs. And so there are two completely different services. The day center, as you can imagine, showers, laundry, phone, case management services, and then upstairs, the dental clinic. And that's not just for our homeless population, but for low income without insurance. And so we're talking extractions, dentures, quite a bit. I'm always proud to brag about what we do.
Okay, that's great. That's the information I wanted to hear.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Salvation Army Knoxville Area Command to provide an amount not to exceed $85,351.73 in community development block grant funds to provide emergency shelter services through the Joy D Baker Center and Bridge of Hope Emergency Shelter.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Catholic Charities of East Tennessee to provide an amount not to exceed $28,000 in community development block grant funding for the provision of emergency shelter services through Samaritan Place.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to consent to the assignment of CITM LLC's rights, title, and interest in the premises and the leases for property located at 956 Volunteer Landing Lane, CLT number 095, JB 014.05, to TS Grove Point Marina's VLM LLC, subject to final approval by the Tennessee Valley Authority.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Ryder?
Uh, yeah, just a minor amendment to a typo. I'd like to make a motion to amend 11O. I can, I've sent this to Mr. Johnson, too, so he has it. The, it'd be substituting the rights, title, and interest in the premises and the leases from CITM LLC to TS Grove Point Marina's VLM LLC. If you look at Section 1 in the attachment, just the recipient of the rights is incorrect. It's repeated, so that's just a correction.
Motion made to fix the typo has been made. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, any questions about the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the amendment is approved. Now back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with Knox County to accept $29,000 as a sub-recipient of the 2025 Homeland Security Grant in order to purchase a side-by-side utility vehicle to be used by the Knoxville Police Department.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Singh.
Thank you. Chief Noel, could you tell us about side-by-side vehicles, utility vehicles?
It's a small utility vehicle, like a four-by-four.
I need more information.
Like a Polaris.
Pardon me?
Like a, maybe like a Polaris. I don't know, it's like a, like a big, like a big golf cart, maybe?
Okay, and how would that be useful for us?
Um, we would use it in a variety of different reasons, you know? For example, we're working a special event deployment, like football games, we have to run water to our troops, just, just a utility vehicle. At our academy is, you know, we have a lot of acreage out there, just to get around and just to get around a wide, wide variety of different reasons, support our drone unit, stuff like that. Search and rescue.
Councilmember Parker.
Is this a newer funding opportunity, or I'm curious why there was some technology request during the budgeting process? I believe some, maybe that robotic bomb, people, I can't remember what the name of it's called, but I'm curious why this was a, the four-by-four was a priority for this funding rather than that robotic dog that we just committed to?
I don't know if I quite understand the question.
Why was this the funding priority for this funding rather than other needs that KPD has brought before council in the last few months?
This is a piece of equipment that we need. This grant is a, it's a small grant, $29,000. I think if you were referring to the bomb, the bomb robot that we have, that's, you know, that would not be, be available for $29,000.
And what are the limitations on funding requests through this?
Through this grant? This is a grant that is from the Federal Department of Homeland Security that was awarded to Knox County because they were identified as a regional recipient of these funds. And Knox County has agreed to allow us to be a sub-recipient of this grant to buy this utility vehicle.
I'm sorry, and how large, I'm sorry, I'm wondering about the total availability of funds. Is this, and also in addition to that question, is this the only opportunity for KPD to receive any funds from this program?
I'm not sure. This is not our grant. This is Knox County's grant. It's not ours. There may be opportunities later. I don't have the answer to that question, just because it's not our grant. That, that money was awarded from the federal government to Knox County through a homeland security program.
Well, the, the point that I'm trying to make is that there are new spending priorities from KPD that come from, to us constantly, and there are a myriad of funding opportunities available to KPD as well, unlike other departments. That being the case, it's still important that money is sought in a wise way. And if there are opportunities for KPD to go after homeland security funding, you know, just a few months after we approved upgrades to our bomb technology, it seems like a missed opportunity to apply some of that funding towards that need. That's what I'm raising as a concern. And so I'm trying to get a better sense, since we have so many new purchases being made by KPD about source of funding and why that source can't be used for things that we just budgeted for in our, in our budget. That was the only question.
I don't remember the exact cost of the bomb robot, but it far exceeded what we would be able to get in this grant.
Councilmember Fugit?
Why are you coming into my call?
Oh, sorry, I thought, I thought you were done.
Oh, gotcha. No, I like using my call. Okay, thank you for your response to my question. I understand that this grant's only for $29,000. I would like to have a better sense of what is available within this funding opportunity. Is that something that you could provide for me?
We would be able to, I don't have the exact parameters. We asked for this utility vehicle. If we were not to ask for a utility vehicle, we could go back and ask for something else to respond to, to the special events and, you know, homeland security events and other things like that, but we asked for this utility vehicle is what we asked for.
Perhaps it would be a description of the program you could share with me that would give me a better sense of, of what the funding parameters are.
Go back and look and see what I could send you.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you. Chief, to Councilwoman Parker's question, I assume that, well, I'm assuming, which may not be a good thing, I assume that at some point this grants become available throughout the, but, throughout the year regardless of our budget cycle. And I, I know in my organization, when a grant opportunity comes along, if, we typically have a long laundry list of things that we would like, and when we see a grant that might meet the, our, our wish list, might meet the criteria, and the amount available is what it would cost us, then we go ahead and apply for that. But, but it, I assume that Knox County just made you aware of this grant opportunity.
Yeah, this is a grant that I believe that we would not even be eligible to apply for. The federal government gives these grants to the counties, just like when we got the violent, violent crime grant from the state a while back. They allow them to have municipalities be sub- recipients of that for a smaller amount. So obviously, you know, for a smaller amount, there's, you know, we, we have these type of vehicles now. These are the type of equipment that we use. Obviously, you know, you go out to our academy, we use these. If you go out to, you know, we have 100-plus officers work UT football games in the heat and the cold weather and everything else, and running equipment, just like, you know, water and other things like that, is something that is much easier to do in a vehicle like this, especially when, you know, streets are closed off the traffic or other things like that. So this is nothing more than the county making us aware that we could apply for this. And, you know, this is not something that, that we see, you know, years in advance that we could really factor into our budgeting. We were notified that we could apply. We applied, and we were awarded this side-by-side vehicle if the council chooses to accept it.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
12Q is an ordinance to close a portion of Ambrose Street adjacent to City Blocks 19184 and 192-
That was supposed to be-
Oh, apologies. 12R is an ordinance to close an unimproved section of New York Avenue which lies with, adjacent to City Block 19523 near Minnders Avenue, bounded by a railroad line and otherwise surrounded by two parcels of land with common ownership, and authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed, or quick claim deeds to the adjacent property owners.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Thomas?
Uh, yes, Mayor, briefly, these, this item and the next one has to do with street and alley closures in my district by the packet, my review of the packet. I think they're both appropriate. I have not had the chance to go by and do an onsite, look at them, or talk to the applicants. I don't anticipate any problems, but I will do that before the second reading. If there is a problem, I will alert council then. But these, I will be moving to support both of these on first reading.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12S is an ordinance to close an unnamed alley lying within City Block 19523 near Minnders Avenue, bounded by a railroad line and otherwise surrounded by a single parcel of land, and sit, and authorizing the mayor to execute quick claim deeds to the adjacent property owners.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12T is an ordinance to amend the Knox City Code, Penixby Zoning Code, Article 12, Landscape to Provide Landscape Quality Assurance, Promote Orderly Development, Preserving Existing Vegetation, and Further Codify the Tree Protection Ordinance, City of Knoxville, applicant all districts.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, we have two people signed up to speak in favor of this item. First is Jessica Rodocker. If you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have up to five minutes to address council.
Hi, I'm Jessica Rodocker. I live at 2140 Island Home Boulevard. I serve as Chair of the City of Knoxville Tree Board Policy Committee. This committee is composed of representatives from planning, the city administration, the East Tennessee chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects, and neighborhood advocates. We are charged with examining policy related to Knoxville's urban forest, and tonight we wish to express our full support for the proposed updates to the city's landscaping ordinance. These recommendations are grounded in the findings of the 2024 Urban Forest Master Plan, a document shaped by substantial public engagement and developed to reflect the community's shared vision for the future of Knoxville's tree canopy. The proposed changes represent a thoughtful balance between promoting responsible development and safeguarding the long-term environmental, economic, and social benefits that trees provide. The Tree Board Policy Committee engaged with developers, landscape architects, city staff, and Knoxville-Knox County planning throughout this process. What became clear is that while the current ordinance was well-intentioned, it too often required applicants to pursue the alternative landscape design process, even for projects that aligned with the broader goals of the code, placing an undue burden on both developers and staff. The proposed ordinance amendments address those concerns directly. They introduce flexibility where it is warranted while maintaining, and in some cases strengthening, our commitment to urban tree canopy. Among the key improvements are provisions allowing the preservation of existing trees to counter landscaping requirements, the use of more organic material to support healthy soil and tree growth, and easing species diversity without sacrificing overall canopy in a given development. Additionally, the Urban Forest Master Plan identified a critical need for the city to employ a green industry professional, such as a certified arborist or landscape architect, to review plans and consult on landscape-related components of development. We strongly support this recommendation and believe it will be a game changer in ensuring quality, efficiency, and consistency from plans review to post-insulation follow-up, follow-up. We recognize the need to support growth and development in our city, but we also recognize that such growth must be guided by principles that ensure long-term sustainability. Trees are not merely decorative, they are part of Knoxville's vital, vital infrastructure, and they must be treated accordingly. For these reasons, the Tree Board respectfully urges council to support the proposed landscaping ordinance update. It reflects the expertise of professionals, the input of stakeholders, and the values of our community. Thank you all for your service and consideration.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak on this item is Brian O'Connor. Mr. O'Connor, come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address.
Hi, I'm Brian O'Connor. I live at 1108 Luttrell Street. I was really prepared to speak in the event that Jessica couldn't make it, so I'll keep my comments brief. As a member of the City Tree Board, I also support this proposed amendment. As Jessica noted, these amendments weren't made in a vacuum and were the result of a long collaborative process involving multiple stakeholders. I've had many discussions with city staff over the past year, and what stands out to me is the focus on trying to balance growth with a long-term investment in the urban canopy. As someone who cares deeply about the future of our community, I really appreciate the thought and intention behind these amendments. The city's plan to hire a green professional shows a further good faith commitment to this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, that concludes public speakers on this item. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to both Mr. Kraus and to Trees Knoxville and the Tree Board and everyone, all the different stakeholders, and I believe the Developers' Roundtable that put a lot of effort and time into reviewing these and coming up with these
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Uh, yes, same. I just really appreciate all the time and work that's been put into this and the care, so it's not going unnoticed. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Ms. Parker?
Uh, we, we made changes to our landscape design requirements in the last five years because of concerns regarding development along our corridors. I know was one of them. Could anyone perhaps from the, from the board or who was involved with this process speak to how those changes that council had adopted- changes that council had adopted previously were taken into consideration during this process? Anybody aware of those?
Mr. Kraus or Ms. Ball, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure exactly which landscape amendments, but maybe Mr. Kraus can.
You know, for parking lots, there were islands that were required, the landscaping requirements that we removed. I remember that being one of them.
I'm Casey Kraus, Urban Forester of the City of Knoxville.
Like four or five years ago. Mr. Kraus?
Yeah, I'm not directly sure of exactly what changes you're referring to, but I think this is one of the most substantial proposed changes since the landscape code, since the re-code process actually took place. There were amendments here and there, but I'm not exactly sure specifics on what changes you may be referring to.
I would just say that I think this has gone through a thorough review by developer community, by Trees Knoxville, by our own city staff and the Tree Board, and that this is a result of the review in the context of what's already out there, the cumulative process. Ms. Ball, do you have anything to add to the various stakeholders that reviewed this? So, they all looked at what's already there and made these change, proposed changes in that context.
I appreciate that. I'm a little thrown off by that answer because I just, I was concerned about the changes that were made several years ago, and we kind of made those changes kind of quickly. But I wanted to discuss how these new changes would relate to those changes, but no one remembers those changes.
I can, I can give you just a little bit about the process that we went through.
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not really my interest is. But my interest is, is trying to reconcile our need for economic development in certain areas, but our need for climate resiliency moving into the future, and wanting to make sure that there's a good balance of those two. And I'm just, I'm a little worried that if those, the changes that were made four or five years ago weren't discussed, then that we might have missed some part of our process here. I'll hold, I'll hold off. I think my colleagues also have questions.
Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you. It's not really a question. I just remembered the same thing. I remember a discussion about it. I can't always remember how we actually voted, but I do remember a discussion about it. But I feel confident that since you do it every day for a living, you probably have an idea of what, how that impacted this entire discussion. But I do remember something about smaller lots and buffers and the islands and all that kind of discussion. Mr. Rosenberg, are you putting your microphone down for a reason?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to be prepared to answer questions.
Oh, I thought you were gonna have an answer, so, no. That's it. I just remember, I just want to corroborate that. We're not all, we haven't totally lost our mind. I was here for that discussion too. I just don't remember how it came out.
Councilmember Helsley?
Yeah, I don't know about four or five years ago, because I wasn't born yet, but I think since I've been on council, we had the talk about the landscaping, but that was more of a thing for developers, was it not? Like what they should do, not what the city should do. Like, I don't think he's gonna go on people's properties and do stuff. If you are, would you please come to my house, Casey, if you want to do that? But I do remember that one, and I think it was more for builders than.
Mr. Ehrens, do you have some insight to share? The city and this council have done a lot, so it is hard to remember all the changes and things we've considered. So, Mr. Ehrens, if you could illuminate us or remind us, please.
Peter Ehrens, Director of Plans Review and Building Inspections. A couple of years ago, we brought forth some parking adjustments, so that when people invested, they didn't have to remove their entire parking lot. And then we had to adjust the landscaping to align with what was allowed with the parking lot. And so it was just, it wasn't a landscaping thing. It was a parking lot amendment. And then we just adjusted the landscaping to align with the new parking lot regulations. And so both that and this are more of a response to what we're seeing in the developing community, and trying to help and remove barriers and remove added requirements to go through a new alternative landscape process. So I hope that provides the clarity you were looking for.
Yeah.
You bet.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, Mr. Ehrens, I did have a follow-up question on that. So, the vote that you were talking about two or three years ago, that's what I'm quite sure we're talking about. Did the new, this new amendment, did it change anything about the previous vote that we did as far as making adjustments in the parking lots?
No, they don't impact each other.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited about this change that we're talking about. We're also, Mr. Kraus, were you here when we did the parking lot? You weren't here during re-code when we first started?
I was.
You were, okay.
Yeah, I was not involved with the process, but I was here.
Please let me know if I have this correct. We're hiring somebody else to sort of be able to walk someone, a developer, through how to do this landscaping, and it feels like there's going to be a little bit more common sense involved, and like you don't take down trees just because you have to put down six trees. So that piece I like.
Yeah, so the goal here is to hire a green professional, either a certified arborist and/or landscape architect that can be used and utilized for both city staff and folks who are going through the process of trying to get a project permitted, and help them along. So we took out some of the prescriptive elements in this and allow it to be more flexible for those projects to move forward, and then be able to consult with that individual in order to make that happen.
Okay. Seeing no further questions, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12-U is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code Penix B zoning code, Article 2, general definitions and measurement methodologies, Article 4, residential neighborhood districts, Article 9, uses, Article 10, site development standards, and Article 11, off-street parking to provide for a new single-family attached dwelling use, Knoxville Knoxville County planning applicant, all districts.
Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to remand item number 12-U, make sure I get the right number, to the Planning Commission for further considerations of the draft amendment to the zoning code regarding single-family attached dwellings. This remand is needed to make sure that the record will accurately reflect that the Planning Commission considered the correct language on this amendment due to some possible typos.
Second.
Okay, motion to remand back to planning has been made and seconded. Any further questions or discussion about the motion? Seeing none, all the, oh, Councilmember Ryder?
I did want to make a comment to provide some clarity as to why this is on the agenda and the origins of the discussion. There is a developer that went to go apply for a permit in an RN4 district to build duplexes on multiple parcels through multiple duplexes. And if you look at the RN4 code, so basically when they went to go get their permits, they found out that the individual sides of the duplexes are all on one lot, and they were told to be able to get individual lot, to have the units on their own lots. In our code, you have to build townhouses, and our code defines townhouses as three or more. You cannot have two townhouses attached. You have to have three. So we ended up having conversations with staff from the building department, zoning coordinator, and planning some time ago, and this is the product of that. I look forward to having more conversation with staff and members of the community. But I think some of the concerns that came up, there's, I just want to make sure people understand what the origin is. I do not believe that our code should say, should treat townhouses differently than duplexes in RN4 specifically. This is an opportunity for a path to homeownership. When the duplexes require additional steps through private attorneys to create individual lots, it just doesn't seem to make sense. And so pieces of what were proposed here came from the Chattanooga Code, and that's how they achieved this, so that right out of the gates, a duplex unit is eligible for sale as a private home and not necessarily a rental. So the part that just doesn't make sense is that our code is treating townhouses, which is not allowed in RN1 and RN2, so I want to be clear with everyone on that, but it is treating townhouses and duplexes differently because there's three versus two. So that is the continued conversation, and I just wanted my colleagues to understand the origins of where this came from. And maybe we'll see some version of it back in the future.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to remand this item back to planning, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, before we move on, there's been requests by a few of you to have a recess. So unless there's an objection, let's take a brief recess and reconvene at 7:48. Eddie, we'll go ahead and reconvene. All right, it's 7:49. I'd like to reconvene the meeting. We'll continue with item 12-V, as in Victor.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, they're just, yeah, we do.
12-V is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code Penix B zoning code, Articles 2, 4, and 9, to add sections pertaining to cottage courts, Knoxville Knoxville County planning applicant, all districts.
Motion made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, okay. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I don't think there's many places we might even see this. I did play with some empty parcels and looked to see how it would lay out. It would actually be lower density than many of the other uses that are allowed in RN4 right now. I will comment, and I will make sure to post the link. I've shared it with several staff, and I'm sorry, I should have, I've talked about it before to some of my colleagues. Maybe we were in, in our retreat or something. But anyway, there is a similar development that I went and visited down in Atlanta when I went to a retreat down there, and it's basically, it was basically five one-bedroom houses. They were small era homes that met within these, that would meet these parameters. And you basically just have, kind of if you think Golden Girls, but they all have their own dwelling, and they have shared yard. It just kind of creates like a cottage development where you have some social interaction. So kind of a different way to lay out townhouses, if you think about it, not having party walls type thing. So it may not be an economical thing. It may be kind of a niche thing that someone chooses to do, and I think there's very few opportunities to do it, but I think it's an interesting thing to add to the code, and we'll see what happens.
Okay. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, a quick question for Director Brooks. If I'm reading this correctly, these would only be allowed in RN4, RN5, and RN6 districts. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear with that for the publics. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12-W is an ordinance to approve an amendment to the Knoxville City Code Penix B, Article 17.3, non-conforming lot of record, to enable the development of non-conforming lots of record while ensuring the development remains aligned with the neighborhood in which the lot is located, Knoxville Knoxville County planning applicant, all districts.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. We do have some people signed up to speak in opposition to this. First is Logan Higgins. Mr. Higgins, if you could come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Thank you. Logan Higgins, 133 South Gay Street. I want to focus on one aspect of this proposed amendment, and I really hope that you all will reconsider this, this aspect of it. You know, I think other elements of it are different, should be viewed differently and discussed differently than what I would like to talk about. So subsection 2 of this proposal limits all permitted and special uses that are currently allowed on RN lots, on non-conforming lots, limits, removes all of the possible allowed uses and makes it only single-family houses on these existing non-conforming lots. The, I know that a big part of this discussion is driven by middle housing and the uses on that and non-conforming lots there. I think that it makes sense to have a discussion about what lot size is appropriate for middle housing. But what concerns me with this aspect of it is the fact that, so we have a minimum dimension, dimensional standards on lots, and that completely makes sense for new lots to have set dimensional standards. However, there were a lot of lots created long before our code that we need to create some sort of exceptions for, and allowances and methods to work on those lots. A lot of those lots are in urban areas, Old North, Fort Engill, South Knoxville near the waterfront, but not quite in the SW overlay, and then East Knoxville and Oakwood, Lingan Park, so, and Mechanicsville, of course. So there, lots like this are spread out all over the urban area of the areas of the city where it's more common to see higher density and mix of uses. So to limit these lots down to single-family houses, I don't think is appropriate for, you know, progressive zoning that, like we have. And, you know, when I read through the examples included in this packet of other cities that have similar zonings, a lot of those talk about how a single-family house at the bare minimum is allowed on these lots. Some of them talk about how single-family or duplexes are allowed on these non-conforming lots. And then some of them, the dimensional standards for lots are way smaller than what our lots are in all of our RN districts. So, say all that to say, I would encourage you all to discuss and consider the removal of the blanket RN aspect of this, subsection 2, and look at this separate from, specifically with the middle housing. And I could certainly go into significantly more details about how this is different from TDR and how the exceptions allowed for missing middle, you know, I think justify a lot of these changes, but specifically with this blanket change, I think it needs to be discussed separately than one with middle housing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak on this item is Spencer Stanley. Mr. Stanley, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Spencer Stanley, 301 East Woodland Avenue. Yeah, so first, I just want to give a background of myself. I'm a younger developer here in Knoxville, and I am passionate about homeownership. And so the documentation that Bentley's currently passing out, there are three different documents there. The second two have multiple pages. And so the first one contains, and they're all for the same parcel, which is 1623 Folsom Avenue. So the first one contains a site plan of a single-family house there that I had went through BZA and was denied. So that was just a single family. I wasn't allowed to put that there in the format on this, this site plan. The second one is a duplex, and you can see that, it's the second page back. And then the third, I think you had to flip a couple pages, is a triplex that I would like or wanted to put on there. And so just looking at these, the footprints are all relatively the same, but the impact of housing, the housing stock is dramatic. And so when looking at these, you know, the sale price for these, a triplex per unit would sell would sell around $199,000 per unit. So, you know, that's, that's pretty affordable compared to what we're dealing with right now. A duplex, I estimate around $249 a unit, and the single-family would be about $349 a unit. So considering these issues that we're facing with affordability and homeownership, I feel like since it's the same footprint, the more units at an affordable price point would make sense. And so I'm just asking mainly for a postponement, for us to at least allow what the implications of this are. Thank you.
Thank you. Third and final person signed up to speak on this item is Parker Bartholomew. Mr. Bartholomew, if you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Thank you. Parker Bartholomew, 5406 Summit Ridge Lane. Mr. Marlowe is handing out some more documents on this. This is yet another site plan. Want to say I agree with the previous zoning ordinances that were talked about. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of input, specific to landscape ordinance. The difference here is that this one has received almost none, and I'd also say that what, some of the questions or the, the issue that was raised by Mr. Higgins tonight is one that I hadn't actually thought about. And as Chair of the Board of Angelic Ministries, I think it's very dangerous to only allow single-family houses on non-conforming lots. I'm just beginning to imagine what a group home would be, or since Plans Review is now saying anything over five bedroom, or four bedrooms is congregate living, what that would do on non-conforming lots. So anyways, I'm just starting to think through that. So Mr. Marlowe has presented to you a couple site plans. These are missing middle housing approvals. They are on 27 and 31-foot wide lots. They are duplexes. And then on the Kansler handouts, these are also duplexes that have been approved on a, I think it's a 25 and a 30-foot wide lot. And one of them has even gone through historical zoning review. So there's been quite a few folks that have looked at this and deemed these things appropriate. Both missing middle and zoning folks looked at these, deemed them appropriate. As you can imagine, with some of Mr. Marlowe's lots, there was multiple and vigorous discussion at multiple stages in those. Missing middle specifically removes lot coverage, lot area, and parking, and it makes development possible, like Mr. Stanley mentioned. Again, I want to point out, on that Folsom lot, he was denied a single-family house at BZA. It was, it was denied. He went through the process, and he did not get it, but yet because of missing middle, he would be allowed to put a duplex or a triplex. Previously, Mr. Marlowe submitted five zoning applications or zoning ordinances. These ordinances were postponed, tabled, and had community input for over a year. Currently at planning, they're set to review the missing middle ordinance. To pass this ordinance tonight on non-conforming, before the missing middle housing ordinance has been reviewed, is rushing this. And postponement is not opposition to this. I will admit that there are modifications that need to be made to the non-conforming lots that we have. We need to think through that. Postponement will allow for community input, transparency, and will result in a better overall modification and code. We ask for, we ask for these changes. We knew that when the zoning report on missing middle was presented, that non-conforming lots were, were targeted. We were, we were consistently told that there was nothing ready for review. You can look in your package. I mean, these modifications were made in March. There's, it's dated on, and time stamped on the, on the changes. The Plans Review presented a memo in June, and to highlight just the complexity of non-conforming lots, the lot that was chosen by Plans Review to talk about how it would be contradictory if we widened that. When we take that 35-foot wide lot and we widen it to 50 feet, it no longer is contradictory because it now becomes a 7,000-square-foot lot with 50-foot of frontage. When you look at the list of cities that Plans Review put into place, only two of those cities have a missing middle ordinance. Two of the 15. I, earlier today, or last night, sent an email where there was over 30 cities that do allow multiple housing types on non-conforming lots. We just asked that we postpone. We need to have more discussion. Currently, one-third of all missing middle applications are on non-conforming lots. So, my time's up. If you have any questions, I'd love to talk more about this. Thanks. Oh, we have some builders here also that came with us to show their support for a postponement. We, we just are asking for some more discussion.
Thank you. Counsel, that concludes people signed up to speak on this item. Counsel member Ryder?
Um, yeah. So I, I want to say I appreciate the time of several people that spent a lot of time discussing this with me. Mr. Higgins and I spent some time discussing it. Mr. Marlowe met with me, and very insightful conversations. One of the conversations that was had was that we should postpone this because it's going to, that we need to wait on missing middle, and I'm going to argue to my colleagues those are co-mingled discussions. They are separate, standalone, different things. When we passed RECODE, we had extensive conversation about lot sizes and lot widths. And I think one of the things that we need to discuss as a community going forward is, why do we have a minimum lot width and what isn't? And what is appropriate? Why do we have a minimum lot area? What is it? And why is it? And it's different in different zones. Each zone has a minimum required lot width and area. Those are the standards. Those are the floor for development of the parcel as it exists. These minimums were discussed and debated at length and intently in 2018 through 2019 during the RECODE process. At that time, the request for, for lower minimums. I met with people who were asking for 25 feet to be the minimum in RN2, which is the district I live in. It was decided in those conversations that we decided on 50. The minimum at that time was 75, and I believe the lot minimum for area was 7,500. I may be wrong. Maybe Mr. Aaron's will shake his head. Yes, okay, I believe I'm correct. Also of note in these conversations, I've had a lot of, I've, I've had a lot of time to think in the past weekend, particularly since I met with Mr. Marlowe on Friday. I realized today, halfway through the day in talking to Ms. Brooks, that I used to have a 25-foot lot next door to me. It wasn't mine. It is now, but it wasn't mine. So it was a freestanding 25-foot lot. And in fact, at one point, there were two freestanding 25-foot lots. They weren't created as 25-foot lots. It was a 50-foot lot that people bought, tore down the house, and split it, so they each got 25 feet. But neither here nor there, I just want to tell you, there was one in the dead heat of my neighborhood right next door to me. Okay. We decided on 50 feet. We decided that 25-foot lot widths was too intense, not wide enough, and not compatible with existing neighborhood development patterns and required setbacks. Notice, I want to, for the public record, I'm saying development patterns and required setbacks. I have not used the word character. So now we find ourselves in a position to reconsider those numbers, the minimum lot width or the minimum lot area. Those can be revisited, and we can change those standards in the code. That's a part of the code that can be changed, and that is the will of the stakeholders and the voting bodies and the Planning Commission and the council. What we are voting on tonight is a loophole that has been covered with missing middle housing. And I understand when people stand up here and say, "I have a vested interest, I have these properties I want to develop on them, I found out once you passed missing middle housing that I could build on these 25-foot lots in the TDR area." I asked my community and my constituents to go along with me. Many of them did not want missing middle housing, and I was like, "Trust me. Please place your faith in me and go along with me. This is going to be okay for our neighborhoods. We need this density." This will allow some gentle density that meets neighborhood development patterns and required setbacks in our community. Our minimum lot widths are 50s. There's some allowance within missing middle housing for a 20% reduction, which remains to this moment because there have been no changes to that. My, talking about transparency, my community went along with that. They put their faith in me when I voted for that, and I asked my colleagues here to vote for this, missing middle housing in the TDR. And, and, and so, lo and behold, when we thought we were working with 50-foot lots and talking about quadplexes and triplexes, it really turns out that some folks figured out that we were talking about, well, look here in 17.3B or E, whichever it is. We can actually build on 25-foot lots and put a quadplex or a triplex. And so what I say to you is, please pass this now. If you want to change the minimums, that is a separate conversation, and that is the way, there are multiple ways to skin the cat. That is the appropriate way to skin the cat, is to have a full faith conversation with the stakeholders, the transparent way, and what the voters supported, and what we voted for them for in the TDR is transparency of 50-foot lots and maybe 20%, 20% below that being built upon. It was not 25-foot lot-wide lots. That is not transparent.
Counsel member Ryder, thank you. Next is counsel member Singh.
I don't think we should skin any cats, anyway, anyhow. That's why. All right, so, when I was watching the planning meeting, one of the things I noticed where there were three different people, commissioners, who, they wanted more information. And since then, I've reached out, talked to others, and I think there are a lot of commissioners who would like to go back over this and get some more education. This is a volunteer body. They put a lot of time into it. If they're asking us to give them more education because they're not sure of the decision that they made, I would like to respect that. I'd like to make the motion to postpone this, or to send this back to planning.
Second. Remand it? You're in. Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve. It's been seconded, so this would be a substitute motion?
Yes.
A motion to remand, okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
It's a remand.
Yeah.
There definitely is a motion to.
So, the motion to, is, takes priority over the motion to approve, so the lawyers are advising me. So, the motion on the floor has been made and seconded to remand this, remand or postpone?
Remand.
Refer. Ref, remand?
Send it back.
Remanded back to planning, has been made and seconded. Counsel member Singh, do you want to continue? Yeah, there was a second. It was seconded, I think, by Ms. Parker.
Yes. One of the concerns I have is, a lot of the conversations I had, people were saying that they wanted to clarify the laws, they wanted to simplify things, and then the word loophole came up quite a few times, almost like the developers were trying to trick us. To me, those loopholes were quite smart because they're helping give us what we need, which is density. So I don't see that as a bad thing. I see it as a clever way to, to provide what, what Knoxville so badly needs. We don't need more single housing. We, we do. But what we need more is smaller housing. That's what the demand is really for right now. So I'd like to send this back to look at, there are a lot of lots, I think it was two-thirds of the lots that were approved for, and I know it's two separate items, the middle housing and this, but two-thirds, one-third of the lots were all non-conforming that were approved. So that's a significant number. So this feels a little fast, especially when the people who sent it to us are still asking questions.
Counsel member Parker?
Um, I agree with those arguments as I read through the packet. Those arguments made my counsel member Singh. And also spoke with Mr. Marlowe on Friday about these issues, and a few concerns that I have. One is the message that it's sending to builders, and I think it's a confusing message. And that's one reason for a postponement, so that we can, or a remand, back to, back to planning, so that we can get a little bit more clarity around this. To me, there is some overlap with the missing middle ordinance, and so, I, I would like more discussion to have a better sense of how these changes do not conflict with the goals of the missing middle ordinance. Some of my concerns that I shared when the missing middle ordinance came before us originally was whether, um, the ordinance would achieve the goals that we had because of some of the limitations that were in place, some of the confusion that still needed to be worked through. I was getting questions and, and concerns and complaints from folks who were trying to do additions and conversions and wanting to add mother-in-law suites and additional apartments onto their homes, but some of the requirements were, were preventing them from doing that. And now here we have a proposal before us that would limit development on these non-conforming lots to single-family developments. So I'm, I'm very confused of how this lines up with all of the other initiatives that we have supported to increase density. So I'm in favor of remanding this back to planning.
Counsel member Fugit.
Thank you. I'm so confused. I can't stand it because we got two lawyers and a parliamentarian over here talking about the order that we can do this in, but my other question is really, I'm struggling with the issue as a whole. Because I do think, I understand the, the concern about missing middle and wanting to build as many units of housing as we can build it. But I also understand that if we came to folks and passed the TDR based on it would not change the, the lot width or the footprint more than a certain percentage, then I feel like that's a commitment we made to the neighbors to not totally oppose missing middle. And I struggle, just as a, a resident of the city who owns her home, that a lot more density than people are used to is not what most homeowners want without a better understanding of how it's going to, going to be. So I guess my question, and this would be a question for the lawyers, would be if you, if you remanded something back, can you put a moratorium that this could not happen until it was reviewed again? I'm trying to put the, save the baby with the bathwater here. Because what I, what I'm hearing is that there's a desire to go ahead and approve what came from planning, because the commitment we made to people with the TD, when we went in to do the TDR, was that lot size would not change significantly for density. But now we're hearing that if you want to do more density, then you can't have that much on a non-conforming lot. So if we want more discussion about it, and Councilwoman Singh wants to send it back to have it discussed more, but you said it was three of the 15 Planning Commissioners told you that, so the majority was still apparently okay with their decision. How do we prevent more of what we're talking about happening when that's the whole concern? Is that we don't want the change? I'm not, y'all are looking at me like I'm crazy.
No, no.
And it makes perfect sense in my head. So I'll just be quiet. I'm just trying to say, I understand the want to talk about it more, but I also understand that it, what Councilwoman Ryder was saying, which is, that is how we passed the TDR in the first place, was we told people that, that, that those lots size standards the first place, was we told people that, that, that those lots size standards wouldn't change more than the specified amount, as you pointed out. So, I, I am afraid if we immediately undo what we promised neighborhoods we would not do, if we change that, then we lose a lot of trust with the neighborhoods about middle housing. That's all. But my question is, is there any way to restrict if you remand?
Mr. Frost?
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, I conferred about that, because there have been limited circumstances over the years where you mentioned a moratorium. Moratorium cannot be instituted tonight. Moratorium has to go on a council agenda and be voted on, because it has to give members of the public an opportunity to consider it and speak for it or against it, and also a moratorium can generally be of a limited length. It can't be the effect of a, of a denial. So, respectfully, I don't think council can do a moratorium tonight.
No, but we could do something in two weeks that for 60 days, you could not do something. Is that what I'm hearing? If you put a moratorium, like when we did the scooters, like you can't do scooters while we study it for six months, or whatever.
Up to?
Up to a certain number of days. I'm just hypothetical.
Hypothetical, and, you know, I think in, if you're looking at a timeframe, Councilmember Fugit, you, you need to confer with NPCs or Planning's executive director to see if they can get done what they need, because they have public notice and a process to go through as well.
Right. All right.
Okay.
Which is, the short answer is I can't do it tonight.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, I think this goes further back than the TDR. I think it actually goes back, this issue goes back to RECODE. And I remember a lot of discussion in RECODE was about, for example, a lot of my district was just this random zoning of different zones where people couldn't predict what kind of environment they would live in eventually if they moved into neighborhood. And what RECODE did was stabilize, the majority of it was RN2, and people could buy a lot more confidently. It's, it did stabilize the neighborhood. RN2 with the infield guidelines, I'm seeing one bedroom, or one, I'm sorry, single-family residences going up in my neighborhood all the time. And they, they harmonized with the neighborhood. Nobody's complaining, the, the guidelines are very similar to what's there, they're very tasteful and they look good, they're reasonably affordable, I say reasonably in, in this day and age. So, a lot of this, as far as how much density we wanted in a particular neighborhood to stabilize that neighborhood, was done during RECODE. Now, TDR was stretched into that, and I can identify with the comments made by Councilperson Lawyer, because I had a lot of concerns about adding more density after we had gone through RECODE and people pretty much had an understanding. But I, I voted for the missing middle, and my neighbors were of the understanding, this will be density that will be compatible, it won't be overwhelming. But what we've got here, we've got nonconforming lots that were actually too small to build a single-family residence on. And now, there is a, well, loophole, I guess I'll use that word, but there was a, a space there where even though the lots were too small to build a one-family residence, you could allow duplexes and triplexes in it. So I think that needed to be addressed. And the planning commission basically, and I think they got it right, or the planning staff said, proposed ordinance amendments is intended to enable development of nonconforming lots while ensuring the development remains aligned with the neighborhood in which it's located. And so I think that's what you're doing, and I think you did a good job with it. Now, the, the idea that there was some of the commissioners that are having second thoughts about that, and I get that, and we're not tied to the commissioners' votes anyway, but I, I did notice the vote, it was 15 to nothing. So I'm wondering if those commissioners didn't feel like they had enough information at the time of the vote, they could have voted no, or they could have abstained, but I guess they didn't, and maybe they had second thoughts, and I get that, but you still got a record of a 15 to nothing vote, and I'm wondering what purpose it would be to remand it back. And in addition, we've got a clear statement from the planning staff that they think that this is the, the best solution for the problem. So, I can't vote to remand it, and I will be voting for the amendment if it goes forward.
Just a reminder, this is just first reading, so just wanted to remind council of that. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, Mr. Arons, I'd like to call on you and ask you a question. If I have a nonconforming lot, let's just go with RN2, if I have a nonconforming lot with this in place, so let's say my lot is, let's go with 25 feet or 36 feet, I don't know, pick a number. I can, this, this, as the code stands right now, I can get a permit?
Yes, ma'am.
How about if I have a conforming lot? My lot is 50-foot, as the district requires. Can I get, I have a 50-foot lot, but I have 5,000 square feet, because I have a short lot, 50-foot, five, I don't know, 100 or something. It's conforming, it's not nonconforming, so this code doesn't apply to it. And I say I'd like to build a duplex there, and it's not in the TDR, it's not missing middle. Can I, can I get my duplex? I don't have my square footage.
The code does not allow you to get a duplex on that conforming lot.
So I'm penalized by having a conforming lot, but I'm not penalized if I have a nonconforming lot, the way the code is currently written?
The way I read 17.3B, you are correct.
Okay, thank you. Here's the thing, this was debated at Planning Commission, it was staff recommendation to pass it, it was voted and passed to us 15-0, and not one single commissioner has told me that they're opposed to it. What I'm all fired up about is, I met with Mr. Marlowe, and no offense, it's not personal, I met with, with you and Maria McHale, and didn't know what to expect, and didn't know what was going to come of it, and I processed all week and long, and it was actually today that I woke up furious. I was like, what in the hell have we done? We have actually passed something that allows a triplex, not in the character with my neighborhood, not at all what my neighbors believed in, not at all what people thought we were doing. And, and I asked them to come along. And it's my understanding, Mr. Marlowe, you already have applications in for all of these projects. And the hopper, is that correct?
Mr. Marlowe, if you could state your name and address for the record, as you answer Councilmember Ryder's question.
Bentley Marlowe, 322 Douglas Avenue, 37921. I have submitted numerous projects, yes, to take advantage of the newly enacted Tennessee Property Rights Vesting Act.
Okay, so you have several in like 25-foot, 30-something-foot wide lots?
Yes, 25 and 30-foot lots are pretty predominant in Mechanicsville, and I purchased many of those from KCDC, after having received middle housing approval on some 25 and 27 and 30-foot wide lots previously.
Right. Okay, appreciated. I've got a minute and 40-some left. So I just want to point out to my colleagues, I had extensive discussion with Mr. Higgins about this, and he pointed out lots that are maybe 48 feet wide, so this nonconforming part would help them, because they're, you know, two feet shy, not in the TDR. I went back and had some conversation with Ms. Brooks about that, and the issue at hand is, and this is what Commissioner Gill eloquently stated, if you went and watched Planning Commission, which is, the question at hand is not, and this is about transparency to the community and the voters and the people that live in these neighborhoods, the question at hand is, is 50 feet the correct width for the lots that we arrived on, in, on, during 2018, 2019? We made a jump from 75 to 50. It's not, do we allow anybody who's nonconforming to get a permit because they meet the criteria of 17.3B and their nonconforming width and nonconforming area? But if you're one and not the other, you don't, you see? So this is something that needs to be cleaned up, and the conversation that I believe people in the building department, Ms. Brooks, Mr. Berry, you guys have done some analysis, I understand, of lot widths and what the, you know, the norms and the standards are and what they are in other cities, I believe, is that correct? And that is a discussion that we might have with the public and our communities in the future. Okay. What I will say to-
Director Brooks nodded her head.
Yes, that is an affirmative yes. Okay, this is a discussion, and that is where the changes need to happen, is with the width and the area. And I have no more time.
I'm not sure who had their light on first, Ms. Parker or Ms. Singh, so, Ms. Parker, you want to go first, and then we'll go to Ms. Singh?
Actually, some follow-up questions for Mr. Marlowe. Because I do remember the properties that came before us in Mechanicsville, and we did approve, I believe there were duplexes that moved forward, but essentially, they were nonconforming lots that were allowed to have the development, that we're now considering not allowing moving forward.
Yes, so 519 Douglas is a nonconforming lot that came through special use. I was able to get a special use, which requires a trip to Planning Commission, a Planning Commission vote, and it comes to you all for two votes, and I have a permit ready to issue for that duplex on a nonconforming lot. Then I've also had middle housing duplex permits ready for issue and approvals on two other nonconforming lots on the same street that went through without any real issue. What I think you might be referring to is last summer, or fall, September-ish maybe, I had two nonconforming lots that were being rezoned. Planning Commission voted to upzone them to RN4, and when we got here, one of them, you guys ratified, and it is now RN4, and one of them, you guys did not ratify, and it is still RN2. One of those, the one that's RN4, has a pending, the third rendition of a pending middle housing. It has an approval to convert the historic home to a duplex under middle housing, however, that is not cost-effective, the house is in too bad a shape. I then resubmitted, because it's RN4, to have a duplex with a smaller duplex that resembled a garage apartment in the rear. In fact, it was Samuel with Planning Staff that suggested that that would be appropriate and be possible, however, there was a determination by Mr. Arons about the front setback under middle housing is actually a front build-to zone, which rendered that possibility impossible. So now there is a pending design for a multiplex there, and some of this needs to be stated that there was an email from Director Brooks early on in the middle housing process where she refuses to discuss or talk about hypothetical projects. So the only way that I can get answers on what is and is not allowed is to submit a full set of drawings. So, the way that it seemed logical was to draw the most intense thing, get feedback, shrink it, get feedback until we could arrive at something that would get approved. This is a great opportunity, I believe, where if we could have some, some stakeholder input, we can probably find common ground that would appease everyone. Ms. Ryder's concern about the neighborhoods and everything. If we want to go stoly, single-family on nonconforming lots, then I think there needs to be a trade-off. And that trade-off needs to be that on nonconforming lots, we need to waive the impervious coverage, we need to waive the building coverage, we need to waive the parking requirement, and we need to provide some flexibility with the setbacks. I have suggested to Planning, but they refused to meet with me on this, that that could be a percentage of the lot width, that your side setback could be 10% of the lot width or 20% of the lot width, never less than three feet. Three feet's important because it's found in the building and fire code. But there's been no dialogue, that they refuse to meet. In fact, Ms. McHale has a meeting tomorrow with Planning Staff, and I was specifically told to her that I'm not welcome. So, it's very frustrating, there's room for this to find a compromise, but it's going to take a serious conversation. And I think it's very disingenuous that this was drafted in March the 11th, there have been repeated attempts by me and others to have a conversation, we were stiff-armed, and this magically appeared at the last possible moment for the Planning Commission meeting right after the 4th of July, when everybody's out on vacation and enjoying their summer. The community, the building community is caught off guard, and many of the decision-makers on, on Planning Commission have been caught off guard.
I appreciate that, and I'm in agreement with all of the questions here at the table today in the development community. It seems like more discussion is needed, and if we, this is something we pass in a month, it seems like that's a delay that's worth it to get it right.
Councilmember Singh?
I second that. So, since RECODE 2018, this is a really different world right now than at that time. We've had COVID, we have influx of thousands and thousands of people moving here, the prices of houses, it was an affordable area to live in, the cost of living, I moved back here because of the cost of living, and that is not what exists anymore in Knoxville. From working on RECODE, so many times it was brought up that this is a living document, and it needs to respond to what the changes are in society right now. So often we get stuck on, I'm not in favor necessarily of building, you know, four houses or multi-housing on a 25-foot lot, not saying that that's what everyone needs, but I'm saying that we need to have it open to be able to, to look at each parcel, and how many limitations are we putting on what we need. Regarding what we promised neighborhoods, if I ask you, and you are in a very comfortable house with a very nice yard, that we're going to change things because other people need things, and you're like, no, I don't like that, that, I don't, that's not who I'm thinking about right now. I'm not thinking about the people who have everything that they need and their comfort is, is taken care of. I'm talking about everybody else that's out there. We did not have, this is a little bit off topic, but it's connected, we did not have an executive order from a president saying that homeless people could be nonvoluntarily committed to institutions. This is a different world, we need to respond to what the differences are. I know that a lot of the planning commissioners voted with this, but I really would like to have a chance to, to check with, check in with some of them. If they're fine with it, it'll go through again easily. If they have more questions, if they have more concerns, I do not see the harm in being careful as this moves forward.
Councilmember Ryder?
I will respectfully disagree. This is first reading, we have a second reading. We can't, well, unless somebody makes a motion to pass it on emergency, we're not passing this tonight. And all the while, every single lot of any width and any area can apply, particularly in the TDR, to be anything. And that is not what our constituents voted for us to be up here for, is to have no rules whatsoever. And no matter what's happening at the federal government, or in Europe, or anywhere else, if we are going to decide as a community not to have lot widths and not to have lot areas, that is a separate conversation. And so, this is not what our communities expected, and respectfully, I live in those neighborhoods, on those small lots, and I did not know until Mr. Marlowe pointed it out to me, that if I did not own that 25-foot lot, that he could own that 25-foot lot and put a triplex on it. What news to me, what a shock and surprise. Charlie, did you know that if I owned a 25-foot lot next to you, I could build a triplex? Because, sorry, Councilman Thomas, I bet you'd be shocked if I showed up and did that. And the issue is, is that I don't believe that Mr. Arons or Ms. Lenoi- And the issue is, is that I don't believe that Mr. Aaron's or Ms. Lenoi can deny me of that, if I apply for it. So we're not going to pass it tonight. And we have created something of our own making, apparently. And I'm asking for support for my neighborhoods and my communities that are in the TDR, and that we look at another way to address the width and the area. We will not refer to it as skinning a cat in defense of the cats that do not like that and the people who love the cats. We will skin the poodle a different way that makes you happier.
Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that in this discussion, we have really, you know, identified the loophole that is being attempted to be closed here. And I guess what I was going to ask Chief Ball was just, when you're dealing with the conforming lot and the nonconforming lot, what is happening here is if you have a nonconforming lot, you have a much broader array of options that you could build, maybe outside of what the conforming lot would allow you to do. Is that pretty fair?
I think that Mr. Brian Berry provided a memo directly to Planning Commission that I also forwarded out to City Council that addresses an exact example in Knoxville of that very thing, yes.
Okay. I mean, I think that identifies what-
And he's here, if you all would like to ask him-
Well, I think we've had a robust discussion, so I think that identifies the issue. And so I am not in support of sending this back to Planning. I am in support of voting for this on first reading, and we have another reading that we're going to have, and more possibility for more discussion. But it does seem to me like this is an appropriate thing for us to pass tonight and not to send back to Planning. Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor is whether or not to, the motion on the floor is to remand it to Planning. All those in favor of remanding, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion to remand fails. Back to the original motion to approve this on first reading. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12X is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of a portion of property located at Zero Keck Road from AG District to RN1 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged. Knoxville Real Estate Management LLC, applicant 3rd District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, there is one person who signed up to speak in opposition to this item, Kaneen Allen? Mr. Allen? Oh, Ms. Allen, sorry. If you could come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Okay. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Kaneen Allen, and I live at 6714 Keck Road. I am here tonight representing my neighbors to respectfully ask that you vote against the proposed rezoning of Zero Keck Road from agricultural to residential neighborhood 1. This isn't just about a zoning label, it's about protecting the integrity and livability of our street. The property being zoned, Ag, preserves the low-intensity, open, rural feel of this part of our city. This type of zoning allows for low-density land use, large lots, and minimal impact on surrounding infrastructure. It's perfectly aligned with our very narrow and quiet road. Changing the zoning to RN1, designed for single-family neighborhoods with relatively large lot widths, allows for higher density than Ag zoning. It permits additional residential uses not currently allowed in Ag, including two-family dwellings by special use, according to the Knoxville Zoning Code, Article 4, Section 4.4. That may sound like a modest change, but in practice, it would significantly alter the rhythm and feel of our street. This road is exceptionally narrow, and it was not designed to support the density that RN1 allows. There's very limited visibility, no shoulders to pull off to, and only 15 feet of shared road space for passing cars. Increasing the number of dwellings along this stretch of road would bring more cars in congestion and more safety risks, especially for the children that live on the street, including my own. According to Knoxville subdivision regulations, local streets are required to have a minimum rideaway of 50 feet and a minimum pavement width of 26 feet to safely accommodate residential development. However, our street does not meet these standards at 15 feet of pavement width within a rideaway that varies from 30 feet to 38 feet, making it ill-suited for the increased traffic. Once RN1 is granted for one parcel, it sets a precedent, and others will follow. And soon a street that has long been defined by its green space, low density, and community feel could slowly be transformed by developmental pressure. We understand that growth is necessary, and we support thoughtful, strategic development, but rezoning this property is not thoughtful nor strategic. It risks damaging what makes our street in the city of Knoxville so special in the first place. Ag zoning works here, and it reflects how the land has been used for decades. It fits the narrow road, the large lots, and the quiet way of life that we have built, and RN1 does not. We ask you to uphold the zoning standards that are already in place, standards that serve a clear purpose in keeping lower-density areas stable and safe. We ask that you listen to the people who live here, the ones who will have to deal with the long-term consequences of this decision. We love our street, and we are not against development. We are against incompatible development. And we believe this rezoning is simply not compatible with the land, the road, or the community. I also encourage this council to read Planning Commission action and disposition on this matter that clearly states to deny the rezoning. Based on the following, it states, "Rezoning this property could be in conflict with the general plan's development policy 9.4 to avoid locating residences or other noise-sensitive land uses and locations that will be subject to excessive noise. The subject property's proximity to a large tract of industrial zoning could create a nuisance for future residents." It also states that RN1 zoning could conflict with developmental policy 9.3 to ensure that the context of new development, including scale and compatibility, does not impact existing neighborhoods and communities. Five new homes could be permitted by right, according to the RN1 Minimum Lot Size Standards, and that increase in traffic at this bend in a narrow road could impact traffic safely. The City Council is charged with making zoning decisions that balance growth and preservation of the community values. Members are stewards of responsible development and prioritizing the voices and well-being of the residents in their district and the city at large. Please vote no to the rezoning request, and thank you for your time and service.
Thank you, council. That concludes the people who've signed up to speak on this. I do want to let you know that the applicant is present, should you have any questions for the applicant. Councilmember Singh?
Thank you. It is a beautiful neighborhood. Where'd you go? Kaneen, it's a beautiful neighborhood. We met out there, and we met right at the curve that I think is a really dangerous spot. The whole road cannot accommodate a whole lot of density at all. What the developer wants to do, and I guess I'll ask Givante to come up, could you please tell us what your plans are, and the details about the acreage, what you want to rezone, what you don't want to rezone, and, yeah, your plans?
Givante, 3901 Ashford Highway. I agree that the road is narrow. That's why I didn't try to rezone the whole six and a half acres, only one acre. And I plan to build four single-family homes, all three 100-wide lots, frontage, and leave the other five as agriculture.
So it's almost seven acres altogether, a little bit less than that, and you're just rezoning 1.38.
Yes.
And then you plan to live on the five acres and keep it agricultural?
Yes.
So that's not a whole lot of density. I do think you need to do some planning on the site-
Yes.
-with driveways and stuff.
Yes.
We cannot hold you to the commitment that you're only going to make three on the rezoned, yeah, on the RN1 area that you're asking for rezoning. But in our conversations and meeting with the neighborhood and talking to other people who know you, I believe that you're going to keep your commitment. Do you have anything? Can you make that commitment?
Yes, I can make the commitment.
Okay. There are other places where if you don't keep your commitment, the neighborhood can speak up. So that's something that I want the neighborhood folks to know about. You wanting to live there as well would make you a neighbor, not a developer coming through and changing everything and then out of sight.
Yes.
So to me, that builds some trust also. So that's why I'm in favor of the rezoning.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, just briefly, I have reviewed this, and there does seem to be some problems with the criteria, and also, everyone's agreeing that that road is not going to accommodate much more density, and it may not even be safely be able to accommodate what it has now. So I'm going to vote no on this one.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12Y is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at Zero Bernhurst Drive from RN1 District to RN2 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged, 4th District.
Motion made to approve has been made and then seconded. Okay. The motion to approve has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12Z is an ordinance approving the request of Savannah Reyes Dixon for an amendment to the northwest city sector plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential for four properties located at Zero 308, 314, and Zero West Inskip Drive, leaving all special purpose and land use classifications unchanged, 5th District.
Yes, Mayor, there's three items here that are of similar discussion topics in the same parcel, and I would like to consolidate them for purpose of vote and discussion. It's 12Z, 12AA, and 12AB.
Okay, motion's been made to consolidate the next three items. Any questions or discussion on the motion to consolidate? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion to consolidate carries. Back to the, well, was there a motion to approve?
There is now, yes.
Okay, motion to approve has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion before you? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AC is an ordinance approving the request of Andrew Osakue for an amendment to the central city sector plan from traditional neighborhood residential to traditional, or excuse me, to neighborhood commercial for property located at 1108 Beaumont Avenue, 6th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AD is an ordinance approving the request of Andrew Osakue for one-year plan amendment from traditional neighborhood residential to neighborhood commercial for property located at 1108 Beaumont Avenue, 6th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded.
And I'd like to make a motion to combine 12AD and 12AE, as they're the same parcel.
Okay, motion made to consolidate the next two items has been made and seconded. Any questions about the motion to consolidate? Seeing none, all those in favors, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Back to the original, the consolidated motion has been, a motion's been made to approve and seconded. Any questions about the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AF is an ordinance approving, or we've already considered that one-
Next three are postponed.
12AI is an ordinance to add the H District zoning classification to property located at 2515 North Central Street, and to adopt the proposed design guidelines for the property, leaving the base zoning classification unchanged. Patricia Craig, applicant, 5th District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, just kudos to Ms. Craig for making initiating efforts to help preserve the historic character of the neighborhood. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AJ is an ordinance approving the request of Brian Ubers for an amendment to the north city sector plan from light industrial to community commercial for a portion of property located at 5552 Washington Pike, 4th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Could I make a motion to combine, so sorry?
AK and AL.
You should have done it. AJ, AK, and AL.
I think we already approved AJ, so-
Okay, AK and AL, sorry.
Okay. Motion has been made to consolidate items AK and AL. It has been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion to consolidate? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye on the motion to consolidate. Any opposed? Okay, the motion to consolidate carries. Back to the original motion to approve the consolidated AK and AL. Any more questions or discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AM is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 3950 Linden Avenue from CG2 District to RN4 District. Reginald Bell, applicant, 6th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AN is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at Zero Landview Drive from RN1 District to RN2 District. Steve W. Abbott Jr., applicant, 6th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AO is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of a portion of property located at Zero Pipkin Lane from AG District to RN1 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged. Aurora Incorporated, applicant, 2nd District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, councilmembers, we'll move to public forum. The first person signed up to speak at public forum is Caleb Barnett. Caleb Barnett. If you could start by stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Hello, Caleb Barnett, 2306 Sunnywood Lane. This is my wife, Laurel Barnett. So, yeah, we live off, like, northwest part of Knoxville, off of Merchants and Pleasant Ridge. And we're here because there's construction, Gravner Apartment Complex on Merchants Drive, which has caused flooding and drainage issues on my property and surrounding properties. Every time it rains, we've been getting muddy stormwater flooding into our backyard, surrounding yards, and into our cul-de-sac. Dating back to June 2024, muddy runoff visible from the apartment complex overruns the storm drain on Merchants Drive and goes into our backyard and my neighbor's backyard, and dumps into our cul-de-sac with standing brown water. Our neighbor has lived in his home for 20 years. We've been there for about four, and he's never had this issue until this construction started happening. So last June, we come home from Memorial Day weekend, and there's muddy water runoff, flooded our backyard, actually went into our house, damaged our hardwood, where we were meanwhile, like, kicked out of our house for about two weeks while they were replacing all of our flooring. So this has been happening for about a year. We've been in contact with Noah Jarnigan, who's a stormwater inspector, Robert Jones, stormwater management. We haven't been able to find any solution. We've been in contact with Empire Construction, who's in charge of the construction company that's running the apartment complex. And they've basically told us that the erosion control is at the city specs, that we basically need to talk to the city. And that's why we're here, because they're saying that the permits- they're saying that the permits and whatever, you know, is getting approved by the city, clearly that's not working for us and our neighbors. So that's why we're here. We're now, like, concerned with structural damage to our house, foundations settling. We get -- any time there's any type of rain, we get standing water in our backyard and our neighbors, too. So we're here for them, too. This is our last-ditch effort to get the city's support in addressing this issue. We're asking the city to take ownership and make sure that this is resolved, not just patched. At the end of the day, the responsibility falls on the city of Knoxville. The city approved the plans, issued the permits, and is the one with the authority to enforce compliance. We can't keep going back and forth between the builder and the city as residents. We don't have the power to fix this. The city does. So my wife also has a couple of things to say, too. She's on the list, but she -- I have some time, so if it's okay, she can go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. We'll just start the clock over and give your wife her own five minutes. She can use as much or as little as she wants. If you could start by stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Laurel Barnett. My address is 2306 Sunnywood Lane, 37912. And like my husband stated, this has been going on for over a year. And whenever this first started and we called the city to get some help, you could see the brown water coming from the apartment complex because it's on elevated ground above Merchants onto Merchants and then into our backyard, our home, a neighbor's home. And it has continued to do that for over a year. And whatever the city has attempted to fix, I think that there's been some problem solving of this. It's not working, and we -- nothing has changed for us. We have to keep sandbags aligning our backyard because we're worried about the structure of our home because of the flooding. And, you know, we are patient. You know, this has been over a year of us trying to reach out and get somebody to help us. So we're just hoping here tonight that one of you guys or some of you guys can give us some information or some help because we're really concerned and, you know, frustrated with the outcome of what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask you to please speak to Mr. Tom Claybo, our Director of Engineering, at the end of the meeting. We have two more public speakers, but at that time, Mr. Claybo will take some notes and try to address it as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Next on public forum is Jeff Tolman. Mr. Tolman?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just some comments.
If you could start by stating your name and address.
Yeah, Jeff Tolman, 616 Lutzel Street, 4th and Gill neighborhood, and in my neighborhood, just a block away. Relevant to the discussion that was just had about non-conforming lots, we've got on the Dairy Street between, well, between 4th and 3rd and Caswell, we've got a 12-foot wide lot. Elegant, beautiful house. It's good friends of mine, good friends of the mayor's. We've got 40-foot, 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 30-foot, 30-foot, 21-foot, 29-foot, 35-foot, 35-foot. And on a 100 -- about 100-foot lot, we've got 28 units in a very elegant apartment complex. Councilwoman Singh, you're right on the money. Either we're serious about a housing crisis or we're not. I mean, it's okay if we're not, but at least that's what we need to communicate to the public. I was totally on board with RECODE. Went to meetings. Gerald is a friend of mine. I'm still in touch with him. But the reality is, these sorts of properties, if you were to propose them, the neighbors would spontaneously combust. "Oh, no, we can't have that." But if you were to drive by and look at it,